Monthly Board Meeting. Let's see, I am mic'd. Oh, is Kelsey not here today? Randy, can you hear us? Not mine, weird.
Sending a message to Jerry.
So she can't hear us.
Boardroom is muted.
Testing, testing. Michelle, can you hear us?
Who needs to hit that?
Testing, testing. Can our guest on Zoom hear us?
I can hear you, this member Bogus.
I can too. Are we live?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we are in business. Can you all hear us? Cindy and Randy, okay. I see nods and good to go. All right, welcome, board members and our USB leadership. We're here for the monthly Board Meeting of Utah Schools for the Deaf and Blind. And we're going to just check and see who's with us. Let's do a roll call. Member Bogus. Oh, she's around. Member Booth?
Yes, sir, I'm on Zoom today.
Member Bogus is there. Okay, Member Booth. I know we can see you. Let's just test our connection. Can you hear us? We're just doing a, okay. Member Klein?
Yes.
Member Davis?
Here.
Vice Chair Earl, she's here. Member Green? Vice Chair Hart?
Here.
Member Hymus?
Here.
Member Carrie?
Here.
Member Lear? She's on a plane, I believe.
Yes, she is.
Okay. There's Vice Chair Earl. Member Norton? Member Norton? Member Reel? Member Straight?
Here.
Member Wood? See ya. Okay. So we are missing, let's see, who are we missing?
Green.
Member Green, Member Lear, Member Norton, and Member Reel?
Yes.
Okay. Any of you out there that I, Member Green, Lear, Norton, or Reel? Okay, so those four are not with us. All right. Let's move forward. We've got an hour of business. Oh, yes. As authorized by, yeah, I think so, just to be sure.
Okay.
As authorized by Utah Code 52-4, this meeting is being held electronically with an anchor location at the state board of education offices. The public may also attend electronically. Meeting is being streamed to the public on YouTube at USB Media. I'm fairly certain that's correct. You don't have a separate one, do you? We use, we use this one, right? Okay. So we are on YouTube, we are live, and let's go. We've got several action items. First, USB FY24 overall budget review and approval. And I assume I can turn that one to Superintendent Coleman, or should I go straight to, well, let's let you guide the-
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, so today we have, this is the annual approval of the budget for the next year. After that, and Carl Ampe will, will present that. And we will also have you take a couple of different votes. I guess you could do it in one if you wanted to, it's up to you, but we'll, we'll present the enrichment fund projects that were reviewed and recommended by the Advisory Council. And then also the carryforward projects where we use our one-time leftover money from the previous year to do lots of one-time projects on our facilities and other things like that. Then, Mr. Ampe will present the last month's budget update for our current work, and after that, we'll get into the fun stuff with the kids. Some reports on travel and other things. Not that the finances aren't fun-
No offense taken.
No.
Carl is, is the recently departed Finance Chair. It's, it's always been finance. Mark Huntsman drilled that into us, so we, we're with you.
Thank you.
You're underappreciated, but there's a lot of fun in getting it right, so.
So, Mr. Ampe, I'll let you just go ahead on the first several items.
Okay, great. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Chairs, and Board Members. This budget is a four-month undertaking. We really start this in late December, and we just finished it up two weeks ago. It's zero-based cost budgeting, meaning at the beginning of the budget preparation project, every one of our 39 cost centers has a zero budget, and they have to justify and build their budget. The directors meet with their staff, they get the input of what they'll need, the directors compile their budget, they then meet with the associate superintendents and have to justify it, and then they present it to us. We compile it into an aggregate budget, and we compare that with what the state and the transfers from your office is going to, to finance. Then the superintendent and I sit down, and we review all the revenues and the transfers and the expenses, and make sure that we're a balanced budget. So it is quite the undertaking, and it's always wonderful to get to this stage where we can present it to you. That being said, our budgeted revenues for this year and transfers from the state and from your office were projecting to be $55,143,000. Last year, it was $52,88,114. So we're up just about over $3 million in total on the revenues. Our expenses, we project to be $55,147,000, and last year, they were $52,371,000. And on this handout that Dr. Tanner has up on your screen, in the green, we have every line item of the projected revenues on that front page, and that's all the detail to support the numbers I just reported on. The second page, if you'll scroll down, Dr. Tanner, is that first section is our expenses broken down by personnel, travel in-state, out-of-state, current expenses, data processing, and so forth. I think a couple things to highlight is payroll is always by far our biggest expense that we project and incur. And no surprise, every school district, every charter, that's going to be their lion's share. In the past, it's been about 78% of our total expenses. This year, with the significant teacher compensation that the legislature gave in the various forums, it increased to 83%. Our second biggest item is our transportation expense to transport our kids from their homes to the school and back to their homes, and that's almost $5 million. And so the balance of that is the travel in-state, out-of-state, and the current expense. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. I could go on on this for a long time, but I don't think you want to do that today.
Vice Chair Hart, thank you, Director Ampe. We got, remember Carrie first, and then Vice Chair Hart.
Oh, thank you, Chair. I just have one question. The second largest expense is transportation?
Yes, that's correct.
In other schools that you work with or LEAs around the state, is transportation typically second or third highest expense, or is that related to the students you're working with?
It's the legislature mandates that we have to pick up every one of our students from, at their home, bring them to school, and back. I don't have Board Member Carrie what the other LEAs and charters, what their percent is. I know it's always significant. I know they're always stressed to be able to provide the transportation for the state that the state provides funding for them.
And Chair, if I may, just one more follow-up. In light of what we're seeing in terms of inflation and the gas price and everything going up, has that moved transportation from third or fourth to second, or is it typically second?
It's always been second.
Is it taking a bigger chunk of the budget because of the price increases?
Actually, we have a 10-year contract with a company called Wostat Transportation, and they have an, an annual inflation adjustment that they have to request of 2.5%. And so we review that, and based on where inflation has been the last few years, we've granted that to them. So we see an escalation in twofold. First is the 2.5% inflation factor. Second is our growth in our students and having to, to add additional routes to be able to transport them.
Thank you, and thank you, Chair.
You're welcome.
Vice Chair Hart?
Yes, I, I see the $45,000 that you get from Medicaid.
Yes.
Do you, do you feel like the cost benefit of dealing with Medicaid is worth the $45,000 that you get?
Vice Chair Hart, if you look, the line up above on Medicaid, we get $2.3 million, and then we get for the Medicaid adjustment allowance, which is for our staff time, $45,000.
Well, I, I, I saw one line, and I kind of panicked because for $45,000-
Right.
I was not thinking that that was maybe worth the time, and making sure that that wasn't a requirement, I did not notice the other number. Thank you.
We have, the State Department of Health tells us we are the most intensive school district to provide services, which shouldn't come as any surprise.
No, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you. No further questions? Do we have anybody online, board members? I think we're clear, okay. Back to you, Superintendent Coleman. Oh, I'm sorry, we sure do. Let me get back. Who's looking ahead on our items?
I'll make that motion, Chair.
Go for it.
I move that we, that the board review and approve, which didn't we just review? I move that the board approve the USB fiscal year '24 overall budget.
Any discussion to that?
It probably needs a second.
Second, thank you, Member Hymus.
I think Jenny's our online monitor.
It's okay, we'll get her. We have to do a roll call anyway.
Oh, you're right, we do. Never mind. I just got out of an electronic voting meeting. We're going roll call, yes.
I would like to amend the motion.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Subject to any subsequent changes or amendments.
Supert-
Just very similar to the finance motion that we ran-
What I'm looking for. Let me get out a keyboard.
So- What's that?
Ask what that means.
Yeah, I was going to ask you. I, I think, well, I don't want to discuss it because we don't have a second, but if there's a clarification of just what the motion is.
Would you like me to clarify, Chair?
I'll, you go ahead, yeah.
Well, we need a second.
I think we know where you're going, but I'll, I'll second it, so you can go ahead and speak to it.
It's just very similar to, to what we discussed in the Finance Committee and then approved yesterday for the entire state. It just gives the board and yourself an opportunity that, that should there be a need or an opportunity to come back and amend, this allows you to do your work in, in the meantime, but it also gives us the flexibility, and you the flexibility, to make changes should they be necessary or a need arises.
Oh, okay. I've just never heard that motion before, because the board always has that prerogative anyway to open the, reopen the budget and adjust it.
We do, and we did that coming out of Finance, working with Deputy Jones to just kind of highlight that, you know, having the yearly approval doesn't mean everything is beyond-
Change.
Review and, and response to you leaders or at Board Initiative, it might open up a, a discussion that could result in an amendment. So I'll second and support it, similar to what we've done in Finance, and can put it out to, out to vote. Any discussion to that? Motion as, excuse me, the amendment to the motion. So we have an amendment to the motion that would include the words "subject to amendment"? Member Bogus, what was the?
The amendment was, to restate the amendment, "subject to subsequent changes or amendments."
Okay, Member Carrie?
It, it doesn't grant any new power or diminish any power, so what, is it just a reminder?
Some ext-, well, maker of the motion, I think that's up to you. I can speak to it as well, but-
Sir, we've had these conversations, I trust you.
Okay. To, to some extent, it's just a clarification that the approval of a monthly or yearly budget does not set it in stone. So you could call it a clarification or a reminder, I suppose.
Okay, thank you.
So that may or may not be a reason to vote for it. I, I, I get where you're going. Like, do, do we need to say that? So, but that's, that's what we did in, in Finance, and I think that's the intent of the motion here. It doesn't expand the power, but puts on the record that this is not a fixed-in-stone type of approval. Okay, any further discussion to the proposed amendment? Let's see. I guess we do need to approve the amendment, then if that passes, do the underlying. So, Member Bogus?
Yes.
Member Booth?
Yes.
Member Klein?
Yes.
Member Davis?
No.
Member Vice Chair Earl?
No.
Member Green? Oh, we don't have Member Green. Vice Chair Hart?
Yes.
Member Hymus? Member Carrie?
No.
Member, let's see, we don't have Member Lear. I'll just check, though. Member Lear? Member Norton? Oh, I, I just- You're right, I'm sorry. I'm used to having our folks writing it down, so- Member Bogus was a yes, Member Booth was a yes, Member Klein was a yes, Member Davis was a no, Vice Chair Earl was a no, Vice Chair Hart was a yes, Member Hymus was a yes. Did I get anybody's vote wrong? And then I think we were coming to you. Carrie is a no. Member Lear? Member Norton? Member Reel? Member Straight? Are you with us?
No. Yeah, I'm right here.
Okay, that's a no.
And I'm here.
Yeah, we got you.
I'm on my way.
Are you a yes or no?
I'm here too, I'm on my way, but I'm an abstain.
Okay, Member Straight's a no. Member Reel? Or, I'm, yes.
I'm an abstain. Yeah, I'm an abstain.
Okay, abstain. Member Wood?
No.
Member Mas is yes. I gave us. That fell short of eight.
Five, five, five yes, so it's-
Okay, so that fails. All right, so we're back to the underlying motion, and did we already have that stated in the second? I think we did. Anything further to the underlying motion, which was for the USB members to review and approve the USB fiscal year '24 overall budget? Further discussion of that motion? If not, let's vote. Number Wood?
Yes.
Member Straight?
Yes.
Member Reel?
Yes.
Member Norton? Not here. Member Lear? And I'm just going to try in case they join us. No, no, Member Lear. Member Carrie?
Yes.
Member Hymus? Vice Chair Hart?
Yes.
Member Green? Vice Chair Earl? Member Davis?
Yes.
Member Klein?
Yes.
Member Booth?
Yes.
And Member Bogus?
Yes.
All right, that one does pass by a vote of, I think, unanimous? 11 in favor? Okay, back to you. Thank you, Superintendent Coleman. Sorry, we're a little bit-
Okay, the next item then is the enrichment fund program budget. And so Carl, I'll let you describe that if you'd like to.
We anticipate receiving the state land-grant trust fund, increase their distributions from prior years from 5% up to 6%. So we anticipate and forecast we're going to receive about 1.1 recommendation to recommend, and the Advisory Council, they don't approve these projects, but they made the recommendation to bring them to you for your approval. So we've got $1 million in land-grant trust enrichment fund projects, and then we've got the community council of about $28,000 for $1,028,000. So if, I'd be happy to answer, we've got Dr. Tanner here, we've got Susan Patton, the Associate Superintendent over the schools for the blind, which comprise this list and these projects, and we'd be happy to answer any questions Mr. Chair you may have, or your board may have.
Questions, Member Wood?
No, I just wanted to comment. I, sitting in the Advisory Council, I am so impressed with the level of questions that the members there, they have community members on the council, members representing parents of all students with disabilities, and they do the research, and if you click through and see the detail, I'm just, I'm just very supportive of the, the work that they're doing.
Thank you, Member Wood. It's good to have that, that additional connection. Any other comments, questions? Member Bogus?
Yes, sir. Sir, could you tell me, and the first line item, and as I opened the Google Doc, it says enrichment program requests, strategic plan, and then it says purpose needs and full description, and then it says activities, football, baseball, basketball. Do you know where I'm at? So, and, and my question is, how does this break out, if you know and if you don't? We can do that later.
I have the detail on that, and I think you actually even put some of it down there below.
Oh.
So you can see-
There's a second page.
Yeah.
I apologize. I never scroll.
Any other board members?
If there's no other questions, we would ask for an approval so we can proceed with these projects for next fiscal year.
I've got, I've got one. Where, and I think you're probably, let's see, that's probably just a click-through. What, what's the use of the $28,000 for community council money that's separate from the, the other trust fund? I'm sorry, I should have just clicked through.
All right. So this is basically the school community council, that the advisory, the advisory council acts on behalf of that to fulfill the duty of the school community council. And so we get, right now, it's saying the $28,000. It will change in October when we look at our October 1 count, and then we get the same allocation that all the districts gets. It's a small amount for us because our numbers are smaller than most school districts, and so they did meet at the same time and discuss these projects, and because we are serving the entire state deaf and blind, and it's such a small amount, we use this to purchase software tools, accessibility tools for our students, whether they're on campus or online. So we have the Fusion software for the blind, and we're using Learning A to Z for the deaf, and that makes that accessible to all our campuses and all our outreach students. So that's how we use those funds.
Right on, thank you. All right, and I did see the click-through. I was curious. So, all right, thank you. Any other comments, questions? Do we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion.
Oh, member Booth?
I was just going to make a motion, so I'll second it.
Okay, that the board approves the 20, 20 FY24 enrichment fund project list.
Okay.
Second, Board Member Booth.
Seconded, comment, question to the motion, Member Bogus?
I, I just, we have to vote hybrid, right?
Yes. Are you ready to vote? I'm just trying to see if you got any comment. I don't think so. Member Bogus, then?
Yes, sir.
Member Booth?
Yes.
Member Klein?
Yes.
Member Davis?
Yes.
Vice Chair Earl?
Yes.
And I'll just keep checking. Member Green? Vice Chair Hart?
Yes.
Member Hymus?
Yes.
Member Carrie?
Yes.
Member Lear? Member Norton? Member Reel? Is that Member Lear trying to join us? Is that Member Green?
No.
Sir, that's Member Reel, okay.
Yeah, that's me. I'm a yes.
Your yes, okay. We don't, we, we don't have Chair Norton, don't expect her, I, I don't think. Okay, Member Straight?
Yes.
And Member Wood?
Yes.
Member Mas is yes. Okay, that motion carries, thank you. And on to-
It was unanimous, but it was, what, 12 votes in favor, three absent.
Okay, let's turn to the next item of carryforward.
So the next item, our carryforward projects, if you remember, we use the money from the budget that was approved the year before, but that's left over that we don't spend. Most of that is due to salary savings, vacancy savings, when we have either budget, a, a position that's budgeted at a certain amount, and the person that's hired is paid at a lower rate than the full budget, or for vacancies that we can't fill during the year, or anything else. Our, our directors do not exceed their budgets, so there's always something left over by nature, and so all of those residual amounts become one-time funds for us. And each year, we carry those forward, and we execute projects for our campuses and other things that, that are one-time, and some programs that we just fund on a one-time basis every year. And so that's what this, this list is really. And it's, it's an extensive list. In the, in the past, we have not had this many items on it, but we've done a lot of larger projects. You can see, if you scroll down on this list, they're color-coded for each campus. Purple is actually for the, the overall state or the overall agency, and then it gets into, blue is Salt Lake County, green is Utah County, and the orangey kind of color is our Ogden Campus. And so these, some of these, you'll notice, are round numbers. That's because they're estimates, and we're currently getting bids on those. When you see numbers that are specific numbers, like with even, you know, down to the dollars and cents, those are actual bids and contracts that we have that we are currently executing or getting ready to execute. This list, the last couple years has been a little different because we used to be able to execute most things during the summer and a little bit into the school year. Now, ever since COVID, things are just dragging out forever. Some of these projects are over a year old, and some of them are in the future. So we have set aside money, for example, we're going to be talking later about moving a portable building because Mill Creek Elementary is closing, we're moving it to our Salt Lake Campus. We've also set aside money to move that to our Ogden Campus in the future after the construction's done in Salt Lake, and so we're, we're planning ahead with foresight that way. Also, listing these things out makes it so that we don't have to request money for little projects here and there from the legislature every year. They can see that we're using our carryforward residuals in a, a responsible way for bona fide needs that we have here. And that's my, just quick explanation for that. Carl, did you have anything else you wanted to present on it?
Yeah, I think we probably should mention, we've been working with Deputy Director Scott Jones and Dever Jacobson on this list. It's, our balance has, as Superintendent Coleman mentioned, a little bit larger than usual. It's because we haven't completely spent all of these funds from 2016 forward, and so we're comprising this list, trying to get the bids as quick as we can, get the projects complete as we can, as quick as we can, and then we'll report back to the legislature as we close out the, the books for the year in September.
Hey, thank you. Any questions? Member Carrie? We've got to get that, got to get that jar in here. What's that? Yeah. Any comments, questions from board members online? If not?
I do have a question, and maybe it's my own inability to read this document, but you have a legend down at the bottom. It says color key. I do have a question, and maybe it's my own inability to read this document, but you have a legend down at the bottom. It says color key. And on that, you have a bright green and a yellow, and those do not appear to be used?
Yeah, my bad on that. You can ignore those. That was from a previous iteration of this before we, while we were getting it prepared for the board meeting, and I forgot to delete those two lines.
Oh, and I'm not concerned about it. I just was wondering if I was missing something.
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I don't think we see any board member comments, so I will move that the board approves, can I do that? The FY 24 carry forward project list. We have a second. Any discussion? Member Wood?
Nope.
Are you just in line to vote? Okay.
I figured it was my turn to start.
All right, Member Wood?
Yes.
Member Straight? Member Straight?
Yes.
Member Reel?
Yes.
Member Norton? Member Lear? Member Carey?
Yes.
Member Hymus?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hart?
Yes.
Member Green? She back off? Okay. Vice Chair Earl? Member Davis?
Yes.
Member Klein?
Yes.
Member Booth?
Yes, sir.
Member Bogus?
Yes, sir.
And Member Moss is a yes. Okay, thank you. That covers the, I believe, the, let's see, do we have further action items? We just have information items. So back to you Superintendent Coleman.
Now, Mr. Rep will present the current monthly budget update for this year.
I appreciate your patience with all these numbers, because there's a lot. The financial report for the first nine months, they ended March 31st, we are financially solvent, meaning we have sufficient revenues and cash on hand to meet all of our obligations. Our revenues and our inflows, and I'm just going to round up, totaled 38.7 million. Our expenses were 34.4 million, giving us a surplus of 4.3 million, which, as we approach year end, we're going to spend a lot of that. And we're projecting we'll have about a million to $2 million of surplus, which will be carried forward into next fiscal year for these projects that the superintendent just discussed. The number of students that we have on campus as of March 31st is 381. The number of services, or students receiving services, is 2,256. And the total services provided to students is 5,405. As you can see on the graph that's up on the screen, the number of services being provided, the growth on that is pretty rapid, and which is putting a lot of demand on our staff and faculty to be able to provide those services to our kids. And then we always report on our three funds, the land grant enrichment fund. The balance on that is approximately 448,000. The donated fund is 253,000, and our education foundation is 1.1 million. And then all the supporting documentation is on the next two pages of those numbers that we just summarized and discussed. Then the enrichment fund project.
Mr. Rep, I think we have a question. Did you want to, is that directed to this?
At first, well, it was the number of students served, but then I felt bad about interrupting your flow.
Oh, no problem.
Since I did that. Do you have any idea why that rapid increase?
A lot of it's mental health, and I'll defer to Dr. Tanner and Susan Patton and audiology services.
I think it's also in relation to the progression of the school year. So we're providing more services as they add more things to IEPs. Or a student comes on, a new student may come on, may have four services, or two, or things like that. So as the year progresses, we do have students we add, and they may come on with more services, or an IEP is held with more services. And indeed, there are more support services for social emotional health.
Is that a trend that you've been tracking? Have you been tracking those numbers previously? And if so, was that a trend that exists prior to this year?
I believe that we've had this tracking of the services provided. We did a little bit of it last year and started into this year. So you can see it going up the whole year this year. So we have a little bit of data from last year and then this year.
Oh, yeah, it's right there. Thank you.
And this is Susan. I would say the same thing as far as it's just the progression of the school year. I shouldn't say just, because there's also, you know, it's hard to, we look at the demographic areas across the state and see, is this area lower than what it should be, based on demographic information? And we do keep track of that, whether or not, because we need to make sure that we're doing, we don't do child find, but we do look at those things as far as, should we have more here and we have so many less here? But it's the progression of the school year and also the fact that it's very fluid. It's just, it's a fluid situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Carl.
Okay, and then the last report is just our enrichment fund spending. Year-to-date, of the 1.5 million projects who were approved last year, we have spent roughly 654,000. And which gives us a remaining 888,000. We'll be spending a lot of that with summer camps and programs and travel. So that will be coming down, and we'll report the progress on that in the next two months. And that is the conclusion, Mr. Chair, of all the financial reports. I appreciate your patience. We do have one other item if there's no other questions.
Chair Moss?
Please, yes. Member Carey?
So I have a, you have multiple campuses across the state. Is there a correlation between the number of students on a particular campus and the total services provided in relation to the number of students at a particular campus? And I guess what I'm really asking is, are there some campuses that require more services per student than the average would seem to indicate?
So that would be in particular for the School for the Blind. Typically, our students who are blind or low vision have additional disabilities that we're serving on campus. And because the kids who have, that don't have any other disabilities, who have low vision or are completely blind, they're typically served in their local school districts because they can meet the needs. We just have to provide. Or another teacher, the visually impaired in the larger school districts, they have to provide the braille instruction or the ONM instruction where it's navigating, you know, safely to get around. Our kids on our campus program, however, typically, we are looking at a lot of different services. They would have a TVI, which is the teacher of the visually impaired, their classroom teacher. Then they typically have an occupational therapist, physical therapist, an ONM instructor, speech language pathologist. We're looking at, you know, five or six if they're deaf-blind, then they have hearing as well. So we're possibly looking at seven or eight different services provided for one student on campus. So you're looking at employing all of those people for one student. Of course, they have a caseload of the campus students. It's not the same for the School for the Deaf, because there's not as many kids with the additional disabilities as the School for the Blind.
And I would just say, for the School for the Deaf, in theory, there isn't one campus that has more significant disabilities than the other. It's wherever they happen to reside and where they happen to live. And so in Salt Lake, there's probably more services you're going to see in Salt Lake because it's our largest campus. And so we have more students there, which would also indicate there's probably more students with disabilities at that campus.
That makes sense. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
You bet. Thank you. Any other questions or, excuse me, comments? Okay. If not, back to Superintendent Coleman.
Thank you. As Carl mentioned, we have one other financial item that we wanted to make the board aware of. And that is, there's a threshold of $100,000 where even though you've already approved budgets and they've been planned, whenever it comes time to execute the contract, we always have the board approve anything that's over 100,000 too, for your awareness. We have a problem with one of those this month that I wanted to make you aware of. And it is, we are moving that modular from Mill Creek Elementary, which is closing with the Granite District, over to our campus. And lining up the movers, the people that disassemble that modular and then reassemble it, we've done bids and all the procurement for all of that. Also, preparing the site, we're going to have to put it on our playground, our grass, little grass patch there for the next few years until the high school building is finished. But preparing the groundwork, hooking up utilities, doing all of the site work, which is extensive. Those bids just came in like yesterday. The problem is, we can't wait until the next board meeting a month from now to have, the contract will be prepared and go through procurement, and legal counsel will review it like we do all the time. But that will be probably prepared this week. And the timeline with these bids was to get these done now so the building could be reassembled during the summer and be prepared for August, as these private companies are also adjusting their schedules to do all the work for other school districts as well, moving portables and so forth. So we're telling you this, that we need your approval on a contract that is not prepared yet, and we have to get it done before your next board meeting. Oh, the thing that is driving this is that the bid, the lowest responsible bidder, came in at like $160,000 yesterday. So it's over the $100,000 threshold, but we've got to get moving on it before you can actually approve it. Dr. Tanner?
I would also like to add that on this, the reason the timeline is important to me is that I have students that are at Mill Creek, that are being served at Mill Creek Elementary School. They need to be serviced now at our campus program. So if we don't, we're really worried we're going to not make the timelines anyway to get this portable set, ready to go for their first day of school, because it takes a long time. Just to put that in context for you.
So I wrote an email to the members of board leadership yesterday notifying them of this and saying, we're going to, we're going to proceed unless you tell us not to, as a board. And then you'll be approving that contract retroactively, which is a process we used at the city when I was on the city council. But I don't know, it's subject to what you want to do, actually, what you want to do about that. So I just wanted to let you know of the kind of dilemma with getting your approval. All the other procurement will be followed precisely.
Okay, a couple of questions, Member Hymus and then Vice Chair Hart. Do we have the bids? Do we have access to those? Are those? Are those in here somewhere? Backup? Were they distributed?
No, no. Our facilities director just called yesterday and said, okay, the bids are in. It looks like this is going to be about the amount. And so we didn't have time to include them in your backup either.
And if I may, Mr. Chair, the bidder is HK, who assembled the modular. It was a brand-new modular, kind of breaks your heart that we have to tear it apart and move it and put it back together because every time you do that with these modular homes, the longevity is decreased. They're a state-approved vendor, and they came in at about 146,000. So then we're going to require they have to produce and procure a performance and surety bond to make sure that they complete the transaction. And then DFCM, because this is over $100,000, the Division of Facilities and Capital Management requires us to contract with their management company called Gordian. And so those are the costs that bump it up to about 160,000. So we can, if you would like, Board Member Hymus, we'd be happy to send that out to you and the board members if you'd like to see that.
I would.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's a lot of money. And it's sticker shock, as it has been the last couple of years with anything to do with construction. You're welcome.
Vice Chair Hart?
Yeah, I should know. Can you tell me what the students, like, who's served in these portables? Like, what are they used for? Obviously, students at Mill Creek, but what specifically?
Yeah. It's my listening and spoken language students, and she's got a class of blind students. However, when we move it over to the campus, we're going to see what we can do to shift it so that we might put older students in there, because they're more likely to handle being outside the main campus than the little kids. So we may shift who's actually in those classrooms, but currently, it's listening and spoken language students that are there. And her blind, there's one blind class.
So, and the blind class is actually, we collaborate with Churchill Junior High in Granite School District. Right now, we won't be next year. And then our elementary kids, we have three elementary kids that will need to go to, they're going to go to Rosecrest Elementary for part of the day, which we have to transport there because it makes it a little bit tricky, because we're now not at a mainstream elementary school. Again, it's an outreach issue. We need to make sure we're providing the regular education as well in those. So we have the two junior high students, and then we have the three elementary students. So it's a, I don't know what the word is. But anyway, so they're going to be served at the OEC, in the OEC building, rather than in the modular at our OEC, so that the high school kids could possibly have that in a transitional type of estate.
So there were students in there this year?
Yes.
What, we're not finished with the year and you're having to tear it down. What is the plan for those students?
We're not tearing it down until school's out.
Yeah, we'll wait till school's out. However, we are, one of the things that the teachers, I mean, when we had the building or the modular, we were redoing the modular and whatnot, getting them there was really difficult because of everything that was going on. So they're wanting to prep and get things moved as soon as possible. So it is kind of a hard thing right now in May, because we're trying to make it as organized as possible so that we can lower this negative impact on the kids, which I think we're doing okay on.
My last question. So they were on the campus of Mill Creek. Were they doing any sort of inclusion or with the students?
Yes, and that's why they were there.
So why didn't they go to where the Mill Creek students went?
Because the portable cannot go there. They don't have room for it.
And they don't have room in the school?
Right.
So by the module, the portable coming to the OEC, it makes it so that that's permanent. You know, that we don't, year by year, have to jump around or say, and Granite School District has really been great in working with us. And especially with us having to have an elementary school and a junior high, they're excellent in kind of a dual enrollment. But that's, it lets it, it makes it so that it's a permanent.
The, I'm particularly concerned about losing inclusion opportunities.
Yes.
And so do these students not any longer have opportunities for inclusion?
Oh, no. They still do.
Okay.
That's one of the reasons that we have been utilizing and taking advantage of our close proximity to Evergreen.
Oh.
That's for the middle school, and to Olympus instead of Skyline. Because Skyline is a 15-minute drive there. I know it seems like it shouldn't be, but it's 15 minutes there, 15 minutes back that we lose every time we transport, whereas Evergreen and Olympus are close, and then we're using another elementary school that's close. But it'll take some, a little bit of transportation.
So you are sending elementary students to Evergreen Junior?
No, no.
And the elementary students are going to be going to Rosecrest Elementary?
Oh, Rosecrest. Okay, okay.
It's a little bit of juggling.
Similar question. Was there, well, actually, let me go to Member Hymus first.
I'm sorry, I was just going to remind you, there's some hands behind you that have been up for a minute.
Yeah, let's do that. Okay. Let's go to AAG, Quezenberry, and then Member Davis.
Chair, I'm thinking of one option to, going to help facilitate the request. And Superintendent Coleman, tell me if this would not be helpful, but the board could vote to delegate authority to Chair you or leadership to review the contract when it comes in, and assuming there's no revisions or changes, to sign the contract without returning back to the full board for review and approval. Doing that way would be a little more nimble and, I think, enable the board to accommodate USDB's request here.
I think that's a great idea. I'm much more comfortable with that.
That was exactly what I was wondering. What mechanism do we have here that doesn't just leave it? Member Davis?
Thank you. So how many students attend in the portable at Mill Creek? And will all of those then are going to be having inclusion opportunities at Rosecrest? I think you said in the middle, there's where they're going to go, but I apologize, I missed it.
Well, it was a little difficult to understand. I'm not going to lie. So we have three elementary students for the School for the Blind in a classroom there. And right now, they were mainstreamed into a Mill Creek classroom for, to have age-appropriate activities with their peers. Those students will come back to the OEC or not come back. Come to the OEC, and then they will be transported. So there will be the same kind of opportunities to Rosecrest Elementary, those three students. The junior high students, we will be facilitating the same type of a situation with that, with either Evergreen or Churchill Junior High.
And for my students, since I have about 10 students there, and yes, we would take advantage of Rosecrest for their mainstreaming opportunity. And yes, we would take advantage of Rosecrest for their mainstreaming opportunities.
And the 10 junior high students were not in the portable, but was just the three elementary students?
No, I, the 10 students of mine are little ones. They're little ones. They're no, no, they're not older than second grade from, for the school for the deaf. But for the school for the blind, she's got one?
I have two junior high kids. So what was happening in that situation was they were, they were having the intense Braille instruction for part of the day and then they were getting their curriculum at Churchill Junior High with an aide going with them to facilitate the Braille instruction there because they, they needed that mainstream curriculum.
And those junior high students were getting their USDB instruction at the Mill Creek portable?
Yes, they were getting there, which we, they were, they were, their, their educational placement was with USDB, but we were using Churchill Junior High for, for some of their curriculum.
Okay, and now everyone's going to OEC?
Everyone's going to the OEC, but we will still have the same amount of mainstreaming with, with mainstream schools. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, so there were 13 elementary students total between both of yours?
Yes.
Okay, but there was no classroom available in one of those schools?
Yeah, they, they, they didn't elect to do that. But it's, it's, what's happening is they felt that the IEP teams met and they talked about what was best for those kids. And a lot of those kids, I guess, that my 10, actually need a lot more support that are coming back to, to the campus. And so, that's why they determined it was better.
Okay, so it wasn't grant, did Granite District didn't say they didn't have room? It was just, it was an IEP decision?
Not completely. Granite, Granite District said that they didn't have a, a plan for where they'd put our Mill Creek portable. And we need our own classrooms and they couldn't give us a classroom. Does that make sense?
Yes, for junior high and also for elementary?
For elementary. We didn't ask for junior high because we already work with Evergreen Junior High.
Well, it's.
For yours, for hers. I, I work with Evergreen Junior High. I've got a large number of students that mainstream in junior high and high school. And so, they go out, they go back and forth throughout the day. We take them over to Evergreen all throughout the day. So that relationship has already been established. The elementary school was when I couldn't get a classroom. And no, I can't get a classroom at Evergreen either.
Okay, and Susan, how were yours different? I'm almost wrapped my head around.
I know. It is very confusing. I apologize. Michelle, Dr. Tanner does not have junior high kids at Mill Creek. I'm the only one that has junior high kids at Mill Creek. And there are two or three, depending on this month or last month. So, so they are students that are, that educational placement is with USDB because the Braille instruction is so intense. So we send them to Churchill Junior High for regular education, mainstream classes with an assistant there that does Braille instruction with them on-site at Churchill. So they need the intensity, their, their primary educational need is vision and vision instruction, but we also need to be able to facilitate that other, the other curriculum. So they're spending half a day, like, for instance, I can't tell you how, how long, but it's, they're spending part of the day at USDB at Mill Creek. And then they're going, we're taking them to Churchill Junior High. So they will then move to the OEC and they will also go to another junior high.
That all was very helpful. And Chair Moss gave me way more latitude for that than I deserve. I'm grateful. I finally got all the pieces in my brain. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Member Davis. Those are questions we all wanted to ask and, and figure out. So thank you for the questions and the response. And I do have, well, let's see, go to, go to Member Bogus. I'll come back to a final question.
Thank you, sir. I'm just wondering, how big is this portable?
Well, it's four classrooms. You're wanting square footage-wise? It's pretty good, it's pretty good size.
Yeah, and it's.
I don't have it off the top of my head.
No, and that's fine. Four classrooms gives me a good idea.
Yeah.
And it's very specially designed for the purposes and needs of your students.
Yes.
Which is the reason we're not selling and buying new.
Oh, it's brand-new. It's only a year old, so.
Ah, okay.
Yeah.
That answers my question. Thank you.
Member Klein?
What number is this on the agenda?
Well, let's see.
This, this is not on the agenda. It's more part of our information items at, at the end of the financial report, really. Just because we needed the approval and we can't, don't have anything to approve. So I wanted to make the board aware of that.
I was just, I was just concerned that maybe it could be a violation of Omen that we're discussing if it's not on the agenda.
Except it was on, right?
Yeah.
Approved the funding, but not the.
We can, I mean, we can discuss it, but it's not really an approval item.
So we can't take action.
Because we don't have a contract for you to approve.
So my other question was regarding what AAG Quisenberry recommended, that, that if you sent the contract to board leadership and there were no substantial changes to it, that they could potentially approve it. But we don't have a contract to look at to begin with to know if there are substantial changes. So how would we know, how would, it just, it seems like we have something missing there.
We, we don't have a contract or, or a bid in backup, correct?
We have, right.
Is that something?
So how do we know if substantial changes have been made to it or not?
Do we have everything? And we did have some items sent to leadership. I'm wondering if those might be, have those been distributed or could they be distributed?
Sure.
I guess if there's a question for action.
I think Mr. Chair.
Good, good, good question. Let's, let's take it back to AAG Quisenberry. It does fall within the budget, but the approval of the specific contract, because it happens to be over 160, that's the reason that.
Hundred?
Comes up for, or excuse me, it's 160, which is over 100, comes up for approval. Back to AAG Quisenberry, yeah, we want to see if we can facilitate this, but follow the rules. That's always good.
Chair, regarding the fact that there's no contract here for the board to review or consider, that would be the whole point of delegating authority to you, is to say, "We, the board, give you, Chair, complete authority to review the contract when it comes in. And if you, maybe in conjunction with leadership, feel that it is appropriate and that there's no questions or concerns, then you just have complete discretion to review, approve, and sign." And that would be the whole point of delegating that authority to you.
So what about Member Klein's other question about whether it's properly noticed within the agenda items that were set up for today? Would that give us the ability to take the action you described, deferring to board leadership for approval later? How would that work with our public meeting requirements?
That's a good question. I, if you don't mind, maybe you can give me a few minutes to look. I, I've got a printout of the agenda, but let me look at it and see if there's any kind of way to, to fit that in. It, it's a fair question. So just give me, if you don't mind, a couple of minutes.
Sure, yeah. Vice Chair Earl has a comment.
Yeah, so on our, I mean, it, it is in our carry forward projects. It has it listed there, unless I'm wrong. Am I wrong?
No, that, that's correct.
Is that something else? That's not this right amount, though, right?
Well, but in addition to having these budgets approved, the board by policy has to approve any contract itself over $100,000. And so that's the glitch here.
I'm just saying, because it is part of that, I don't know.
If you want to, we can circle back to this at the end of our.
Why don't we do that? Yeah, thank you, AAG Quisenberry. Let's, let's go back to other information items.
Okay.
So, actually, I'll ask one question while he's waiting. What was DFCM's involvement here? What's their take on this? What's the consultation and their opinion of?
Also, when there's a project over $100,000, DFCM does the project management. And in this case, they actually outsource that to a vendor called Gordian. So, that's another complexity for all. This is kind of status quo for all of our projects. Not the last-minute bids that come in, but all these complexities, this is pretty much standard operating procedure with DFCM.
So what was their or their designees' take on the project? Were they part of the consultation of kind of whether to do this and how much to pay, that type of thing? I tip, that's usually what DFCM comes in, right? They evaluate the need, feasibility, effectiveness of the program or, or whatever project you need. So what was their, what was their take? I know they've, you know, we've been discussing that because we've had these other facilities.
Right, our facilities manager, Dwight Overguard, has been in consultation with them. We've been using, and the bids was a state vendor that we've gotten the bid from, HK, it's HK something, I'm sorry, I don't have the, the name offhand, their official name. And so, we've gotten the bid from them. And as Superintendent Coleman just mentioned, because it's over $100,000, DFCM requires state agencies to contract with their company called Gord, the company called Gordian, which is construction manager to manage. Because apparently, they don't have enough staff on hand to be able to do all the state construction projects. So, they realize that we were at the mercy of Granite School District. Granite is kicking us off their property. And so, they're helping facilitate this move so we can get it done and up and going before August when school resumes.
Thank you, okay. So Gordian approves, has been involved, is working with Granite on the?
No, they're working with us. They, they rep, they'll work with us. And then with DFCM. And then they'll be involved with the Granite School District as well.
That's what I meant. I, I understand their routine by you, but they're, and Gordian is on the other side of it, so you've got two sort of designees, right? But they are, they are in contact with Granite. They're facilitating the process. They understand that's where you want to go and they approve. Have they looked at this bid? Are they involved in bid analysis?
No, they, they weren't. They, they delegated the bidding to us through, and we have a purchasing manager, Chad Hines, to make sure that we're in compliance with state procurement. And then we work closely with Attorney General Quisenberry. Once we get that draft of the contract, we'll get that to Brian for his review and comments.
Okay, thank you. Looks like Brian is digging as we speak. So let's, let's move to another item. We'll come back to AAG Quisenberry.
Now we have the information on students themselves. So we'll start with Superintendent Patton talking about the early childhood division of the School for the Blind.
Okay, I will go through this fairly quickly, but it is one thing that is informational as far as one of the divisions under the School for the Blind. And the director will tell you that it's her, that it's got to be your favorite because they're the, they're the littles. Our, we, in the past, USDB has had the early childhood, the preschool division, and the PIP, the Parent-Infant Program for Blind Visually Impaired Students. They have been under two different divisions. This last year, we put them in the same division and called it our early childhood division. And there's a couple of reasons why, but we'll play Karen's. This is the director of the early childhood division, Karen Borg.
Karen Borg from Utah Schools for the Deaf and the Blind. The early childhood division of the School for the Blind is a brand-new division. It's a combination of what was the birth-to-three program, the parent-infant program, and the preschool program, which is three to five. We were so excited to have the chance to bring those two factions together because both in university preparation here in Utah and the Utah State licensure is a birth-to-five license. As we bring those expertises together and talk about any individual child, it's been grand. One of the things we didn't anticipate, but it's been so exciting, is that family networking because families can visit with parents who have just gone through what they've gone through. And, and the, the parents that have three to five-year-olds can look back and feel like experts because they're talking to others about the path they've just so recently traveled. We have two basic departments. One is a home-based service. That's the parent-infant program for the blind. And in that service, our, our teachers go right into the homes, they coach families on what to do with their little ones. They focus on developing compensatory skills or using vision, developing that vision to the highest potential possible and kind of get them ready for preschool. We also, in the preschool program, that's a classroom-based program, and it's offered on all three of our campuses, in Ogden, Salt Lake, and in Springville. And we have statewide activities. For example, in June, we're having a parent conference where all of the parents of the early childhood division are invited to come. One of the first things we do in the parent-infant program when we've been alerted to a need is make sure that the parents and the baby are able to bond, for example. Because as parents, we look for that social smile, we look for that little one to give us eye contact, to notice us, to explore our face with their eyes. When there is a low-vision condition and that isn't happening, parents are often a little bit stunned and feel unsure about how to proceed. Helping all those relationships be good and strong and harmonious because that's when learning occurs. When children feel comfortable and safe and cozy, then they, they want to learn, they want to communicate. They begin to build those strengths to, to provide a platform for more learning.
So Karen really talked a lot about just what is in this, this presentation. I'm going to talk just a few minutes about our preschool program first and then our parent-infant program. It, it has been really, really great to embed both of those divisions together because, like what Karen said, it really helps our parents, but it also just makes a smooth transition. The other thing that our educators need in both our parent-infant program and the preschool, they have to have a teacher of the visually impaired endorsement, which typically consists of a master's degree. Plus, they have to have an early childhood license, which is also another year on to that. So they're, they're very, very, they have a lot of expertise in the birth-through-five. Right now, we're currently serving in preschool, not in parent-infant, infant program, that's a lot. But we're serving about 20 to 30 students. And these are only on USDB campuses. Remember that we're an outreach program, so we're serving a lot of kids in preschools in their local school districts, but this is only in our, in our USDB campus. Their age is three to five. We have five teachers. We have eight paraprofessionals and three campuses across the 90 miles. And that will look like we have five teachers for 20 to 30 students with eight paraprofessionals. But these students, if you ever get a chance to come and see them, they have such unique needs, both with additional disabilities, physical disabilities, we have complex needs, but also with communication and just vision. Vision is their primary educational need, which vision is, is all about, that's, that's how we learn. That's, that's really how we are learning a lot of the things. So we have just a quick video here. It's just a few seconds long. But this student is deaf-blind, actually, and she is learning a communication switch. And I'll just let you see.
Good job. Okay, thank you, Zlani.
So she is learning cause and effect, that if she pushes this button, the fan's going to go on. And that seems like such, I don't know, such a concept that is very, is taken for granted. But we have to be focused on teaching those kid, the kids with, with no vision. And again, this, this student has deafness as well, so we're, we're teaching cause and effect. And those are the kind of things that our, our preschool teachers are teaching. Plus, we have academic kids, too, who are doing pre-Braille lessons. So they have a level of expertise that is just really, really immense. We're really focused on the literacy skills, numeracy skills, social interaction skills, which are huge because when, if you think about everything that you get when you even walk into a room and you see who's in here, you see their facial expressions, you see if they're having a good day, maybe a bad day, our kids are missing all of that. So we're actually teaching them how to get that information. Our orientation and mobility skills with cane travel and then technology skills, which is very, very important. And it's very critical and important that we're teaching technology at a very, very early age. Okay, so our parent-infant program. First of all, can you look at these pictures and think, wow, how cute are these kids? We have, we're serving between 400 and 500 families annually. And when I say families, we're serving families because our, our providers go into the home and they're providing direct services, but they're also providing services to families. They are a listening board, they connect families to other families, they have a direct connection with those parents, which is critical for our parents to have a healthy attitude and advocacy and know, and empowering those parents for the lifetime of, of education and that their kids are going to go through. Right now, we have 15 early intervention specialists. It's a statewide program, so these, our students, our, our students, our children that are in our parent-infant program are served all over the state from the School for the Blind that have vision loss. And we also have regional toddler groups where parents bring the, the children to a campus classroom that we then teach those social interaction skills and we're trying to get them ready for preschool attendance. This, we serve in the child's natural environment, which means typically that's in their home. But it could be that that's at a daycare, it could be that it's, it's just where the, the child would naturally be without a vision loss. And then I just, I put this in here because Part C Services, which is the Parent-Infant Program, Birth Through Three, is under IDEA. There are some differences, but it is under IDEA. And I, I think that a lot of people, when they hear intervention, they don't think that, but it is, it is under IDEA. So to, to close, we have this wonderful video of, she's actually an early intervention teacher or early intervention provider, and she had two students with vision loss, and so she's just going to tell, tell her story.
There are so many reasons why I love my job. I actually never knew that PIP existed until my third little boy was born. He was born with a head full of white hair, not blonde like my other two boys, but white. The nurses would come in regularly to see this white-haired baby. We had no idea that he had a vision impairment until his two-month checkup when the pediatrician was concerned that he wasn't making eye contact and he had my stagmus. He referred us to an ophthalmologist and we were able to see him that day. He was diagnosed with aculocutaneous albinism. We began our journey with PIP right away. It was an answer to our prayers. We had no idea what the future would hold for our little caden or where to even start to help him. Our lives had been shattered with the diagnosis, but through our PIP providers, we were taught how to make adaptations that helped him to use his vision best. Three years later, we welcomed a white-haired baby girl. We were so happy to have a little girl after three boys, and surprisingly, her white hair didn't make us sad. We knew there was a chance. We didn't miss a beat and got in touch with early intervention and a new PIP provider worked with Bryn. I honestly do not know what I would have done without our three PIP providers, Jennifer, Margaret, and Bess. They were so positive and encouraging and helpful. They helped us remember that our kids could do anything they wanted to do. I was a preschool teacher and I played with the idea of becoming a PIP provider, but I knew I would have to go back to school and I had little kids and just didn't know how it would work until Bess approached me about a master's program that she worked on that had a grant that would pay for my schooling. This piqued my interest and long story short, I went back to school and began working in PIP a couple of years later.
I have loved every part of my job. I love getting to know the families and helping them along their own personal journey with vision impairment. I love to share my experiences. Although they're different, we still connect in a unique way. The best part of my job is watching my babies progress. They brighten my days. I have built many friendships with families I have worked with and love those little ones so much. I feel privileged to help parents learn to be an advocate for their little one. To let them know that their voice is important and needs to be heard. My job is so rewarding and has brought me so much joy over the years. I can't ever see myself doing anything else. I love when families send me pictures and videos of things that their child is learning to do. They are so determined and so strong. PIP helped our family to build our foundation for our kids' futures, and I love that I am now able to help others do the same.
So I think that kind of wraps it up as far as, you know, I, we talk about all these budget things. We talk about, which is so, they're so critical, but really, this is the reason why we do what we do and why we're, why you as a state board and us as administration at USDB, it's for, we miss, we miss seeing these little, these littles, but also the kids in school and the, the impact it has on their lives is incredible. If you think about your children or nieces and nephews or children that you've been involved with, of course, because we're all in education, we know children, right? And how they learned, they used their vision. Their vision was their sense of learning. Vision and hearing are your distant senses and that's how, how children develop. And if you could not hold your baby here and they could not see your eyes, they could not see your smile, think how that would change the bond you had with your child. It's, it's incredible. And the, the thing that these, these parents need are supports so that they can help their children, and that's what we're providing. And then we're also providing the strategies for, for the, the children as well. Any questions? That's our early childhood division, PIP, early, our Parent-Infant Program and our preschool. I'm very proud of it.
Board member questions, comments? Member Carrie.
Thank you. Just the only comment is, thank you for the incredible work you do. I mean, that video just really touched home and thank you for that.
You're so welcome. And I have to say thank you to our teachers. They're, 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 they're our super, superstars and their children. So thank you for that.
Very inspirational as always. We have, I think, from AAG Quisenberry, some input on the question of the contract approval. Is that?
Yes, sir.
Turn it back to you. Okay.
Yes. All right, good. So here's what I've been able to find. First, on the agenda, item 5.3 is, it's an action item, and it's titled FY24 Carry Forward Projects, and there's a backup document that goes along with that, and it's a table. It has some colored rows. And about halfway down is the, this item in question. There it is. And if you, okay, go down a little bit further. There it is. There's, right there. So SLC, yeah, so it's the light blue. You can maybe highlight it with your cursor. Yeah, the $120,000. That's it right there. So it says, starting on the left, SLCo, so Salt Lake County, I'm guessing Mill Creek Portable Move to SLCo Campus Plus Connections. There's a date, June 1st, 2023, for $120,000. So there's the notice that is, that is given to the public. I looked at Open and Public Meeting Act, and it requires simply that, that the notice provides reasonable, here it is, reasonable specificity to notify the public as to the topic or the topics to be considered. So I think that chart satisfies that reasonable notice. Chairman, in our legal world, it's akin to notice pleading. You just got to give notice of, it doesn't have to be right on the specific dollar and cents, but just that this item is going to be up for discussion and action. And so it's my opinion that it does, this does satisfy Open and Public Meeting Act, the notional requirement. And then as I've indicated before, as far as the, the concern that, that the board does not have the contract in front of it right now, the way that you would alleviate that concern, the best I think that you could do is, is for the board to vote, have a motion to delegate authority to you or you and leadership to review, and if, if you feel it meets the requirements and, and, and if there's no issues or concerns, then you would have authority to sign the contract on behalf of USDB.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for the quick response. Member Carrie.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to delegate for this particular item only, to give board leadership authority to accept and review a contract related to the Salt Lake County Mill Creek Portable Move to Salt Lake County Campus and Connections, and authority to execute that contract, not to exceed $120,000. Excuse me, $160,000, and that, that contract be provided to the entire board. Yeah, be, be provided to the entire board. Yeah, upon availability. And, and I'm open to a friendly amendments if the wording isn't quite right on that.
So I would, I would move to make a friendly amendment that prior to taking any action, board members can provide feedback.
I'm okay with feedback. I just don't want it to be, I don't want it to delay board leadership's ability to execute the, the, the agreement.
Just, I know it's not, it's, you're still discussing about a friendly amendment or not. You're welcome to take that. I would speak against that with that portion on it. So, so to be a friendly has to be without objection. Sounds like there is an objection. So, so the question would be whether we want to, somebody wants to tee it up as a notice, as a motion. Sorry?
I think, I think that that would probably violate OTMA if we were giving feedback on something behind scenes instead of in an open public meeting.
So, sorry.
Go ahead.
With respect, then we would be violating OTMA all the time if that's the case, that we're violating OTMA when we're giving feedback.
Regarding that point, I'd say if it's less than eight members that are giving the, the advice or the asking questions or giving opinions, then you're not going to run into OPMA on that. So if it's one or two that jointly call a leadership and express a concern or have a question, I think that you're less than the core requirement, so OPMA would not be triggered at that point.
I think we treat it as, if, if the amendment won't be withdrawn, I think we treat it as a hostile amendment and then we can vote on, I guess what.
If you'd like to frame up the motion, the amendment, then we put it up for a vote.
So I guess with respect, without the amendment, my vote is no, because I, I'm not going to delegate my, my responsibility as a board member to board leadership specifically without seeing a contract. I just, my level of trust is not there.
Okay, you can either vote against the underlying motion or choose to make the motion to amend. Is there a motion to amend or, or no? Member Klein?
If we, when the contract is shared with us, it doesn't, we're not prohibited from calling you up and saying, ah, this is an issue, right? And voicing our opinion to you as leadership. We don't need to put that in the motion to be able to give our, express our concern.
Okay, Member Davis, comment, or, no, maybe not.
Yeah, I, I will speak to the motion. I mean, I'm fine with leadership reviewing the contract, but, but I hope we'll also continuously, you know, when you're reviewing for the contract, you're also reviewing for feasibility and DFCM is involved in the conversation and looking at facilities and the overall picture and does the portable need to be moved? Does that impact at all the recommendations with the building? Would it hurt the recommendations? Does it need to be sold? Do we need it? Is that the place we need it? I just hope that they're involved and we're looking at that so we don't end up in a situation maybe similar to the past. So I would support the motion. I hope all of those things are being reviewed and considered before anything's signed.
Member Carrie.
Yeah, just to make sure that I understand the motion that I made. It's my understanding that we're, all of us will get a copy of the contract in advance before it's executed. We'll all have the opportunity, and I just want to say this in light of what Board Member Davis just said, that we'll all have the opportunity to review it, provide our feedback, and I do appreciate what Board Member Bogus said. We do have a tremendous responsibility. I understand the, the time constraint, and that's, I think we've put in the necessary limitations and protections, but yes, I agree that as long as we all have the opportunity to review it, express ourselves, I'd like to proceed with the motion and would call it.
Okay. No further, and, and I'll just say, we obviously want as much input as we can get. And so, you know, I think we're doing this because it appears to be the only way to meet the, the needs that are presented and, and still comply with the rules. Appreciate AAG Quisenberry weighing in on this, and we will certainly want to follow that scrupulously, put it out, hear any input, and go ahead if it all appears proper. So, all right, with that, we'll put it to a vote then. Member Wood.
Yes.
Member Straight.
Yes.
Member Reel.
Yes.
Member Norton. Member Lear. Member Carrie.
Yes.
Member Hymus.
Yes.
Vice Chair Hart.
Yes.
Member Green. Vice Chair Earl.
Yes.
Member Davis.
Yes.
Member Klein.
No.
Member Booth.
Yes.
Member Bogus.
No.
Okay, that motion passes and we certainly understand the concern to make sure we take input and exercise our responsibilities that are delegated to us. So we will, we will do that. That's, passes with 10 in favor. Okay. Chair? Yes.
One point, board members, if or when you submit your, or email your feedback or questions, I would direct your email just to leadership and not to the entire board.
Right. Let's not get a quorum discussing it online. Okay, does that conclude the presentation or back to Superintendent Coleman?
Yeah, so, thank you. Okay, so Mr. Chair, we have two three-minute videos. If, if you still are willing to do that today. If not, of course, we'll do it whenever you want to, but they're on each of the two spring break trips that the students from the deaf school took, one to India and one to Philadelphia. And then my superintendent's report is just one item.
So members, let's see, we, our only time constraint here is we've got a two o'clock. We're obviously over that, but we're not five hours over like we were last night, so we're, we're, we're getting there. We, we have an hour remaining to discuss the next steps of our strategic plan. So we could do it now or we could bring it next time, I suppose, if it's, these sound like the kind of things we like to kind of sit back and enjoy.
I, I think it'll go fast. Superintendent Tanner, I told her, keep it super short and so they're, they're well-prepared and kind of canned.
Folks want to do that now or, or put it to next time? Good, let's do it.
I say you're all missing out on having the actual kids deliver the presentation because I've never seen three little teenage girls giggle so much in my life.
Well, these are always highlights, so yeah, let's go for it.
Thank you so much. This is the trip from Philadelphia, the first one. It's the kids that went to Philadelphia.
Students are interviewed on the Salt Lake City campus of USDB, communicating in sign language, and we see a few pictures from their tour in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania.
So often when you read about a place in a book or watch a video about it, you have to do a lot of the work imagining what it looks like in person or what it would feel like to be there. And as you see those places in person and you can physically touch them, you get a better sense and feeling of what the place is like, and that was really cool. So Philadelphia definitely has a lot of history related to early America, right? That's where the Declaration of Independence was signed. A lot of their old buildings and old townships are still there, and they were, right, a famous or important part of history. Some of the buildings and shops, especially compared to here, right, we're more modern here in Utah. We don't have a lot of our old historical buildings like Philadelphia does. So on our trip to Philadelphia, right, we learned about a specific battle within the American Revolution, right, that happened in Washington DC, and they have some exhibits of that in the museum there. But they have lots of different tents and books and papers and things on display, as well as clothing and bedding items. And they would put lots of those things into temporary housing and save them. So when we got to the museum, we were able to see a lot of those displays. And as they would go on fighting their battles, they would take all of that down and set it up again in the next place. Before we went to Philadelphia, I knew a few things, but being able to go and see new things and experience new things was really fascinating for me. We got to go to this old penitentiary and being able to see the things in person was really amazing. So Philadelphia and Utah are different. I don't know, for me, Utah is what I've known. I grew up here and it just is everything I'm familiar with, but going to Philadelphia, that was new and different and really exciting. Being here is fun, but learning about the history and learning about even different cultures in a different state or different ways that they do things in those states is really interesting. And the food, too. The food is very different from state to state. So I think that's why I think it's cool for people to experience, study abroad, because it's not the same as life here in Utah.
And I've got one from India. As she said, the kids are hilarious, but you'll get a little bit of it. They're not, they aren't as funny on TV.
USD study abroad students are interviewed on the Salt Lake USD study abroad students are interviewed on the Salt Lake City campus, communicating in American Sign Language. Photos from the trip showing the famous landmarks and the tours they took are also shown.
So, before we went to India, we really studied a lot about the Indian culture, the language, the different food that was there. We also studied about the rules of their society. We really wanted to respect their culture and the practices that they had set in place, especially for their religious locations, so we studied that to make sure we were behaving appropriately. Being able to see the Taj Mahal in person, right, it was very white, and it was impressive to know that they had built that with their hands, and they had carved things in the Taj Mahal. So, there were lots of different designs, sometimes they were flowers, or animals, or animals like an elephant, right? There were lots of different designs carved into the Taj Mahal. So, while we were in India, we got to see an elephant and touch an elephant. We got to feed the elephant their favorite kind of fruit. I don't remember what it was exactly, but the elephant really took it from our hand really quickly, which was fun. So, being in India, there were lots of experiences that I had that I was not expecting, right? The traffic, it seemed to be very aggressive, there weren't lines on the road to separate directions of traffic, they didn't have any of that, and people were just driving all over the road, and they didn't get into accidents, which was really lucky and crazy to think about. So, on our trip, we did get to interact with other deaf individuals. They don't use ASL, and so we really tried to communicate with gestures or other types of nonverbal communication, and they did the same. So, we learned a few basic words and signs, but most of our interactions were visual and gesture-based, and there are some words that are similar between Indian Sign Language and ASL, but it never was really difficult to communicate with those individuals, right? We made sure that we could all understand each other. It was really cool to learn the different signs in their language, right, and to really see how iconic it was and how it really matched the visualness of what it looked like, right? I know that sometimes in ASL, we use letters in some of our signs, but for the Indian Sign Language, it was a lot more visual.
She's saying, "Good morning, good morning."
So, going abroad to India, it was really shocking to see the different types of clothing and the languages that they were speaking, and it really changed my life to be able to see those things and learn about their culture. So, if another student wanted to do a study abroad, I would definitely encourage them to do that. There's lots of things that they can learn, and being exposed to different parts of culture and rules and things, right, is really beneficial. Sometimes it can be tricky learning the rules of that culture, but it's worth it to experience those things, and it's important for people to go and study abroad.
I want to add to this, is that they talked about it, one of the things, like, we saw that we got to see the School for the Deaf, and it's important, it was important to everybody to see what we have and what blessings we have. For example, they, there were no girls there. Why? Because the government doesn't pay for the girls to go. The girls can come, but they're not getting funding. So, the boys are there on the week, we went on a Jane holiday, and so the girls were not present, because it's a holiday, they don't allow the girls there, but if they want to, they have to get themselves there, and then they can participate. There was a difference, when I talk about culture, the difference between men and women was significant there, and so that was a real culture shock for the girls to see that. And then, the language was different too. We learned, like, for example, India is typically signed like this around here in America, we're totally doing it wrong. They use India, and so we learned those kind of things. She was saying, "Good morning, good morning," and "good night," because the sun comes up, and now we just say, "Good morning." So, it was fun, a lot of good things we learned. I could go for hours, and I won't, but it was an amazing learning experience. I wouldn't want to live there, but it was great to go see it.
Love it, thank you. I've heard that, by the way, people I've known that have been serious world travelers say, "Nothing prepared me for India," right?
Right.
Just a total new eye-opener. Beautiful stuff. Any, any other comment, questions from board members?
This is not business-related. I didn't think about the fact that American Sign Language is American, and other places have, have different... Is there any, is there any international sign language, like, are there any parallels?
There, when you go to Europe, they try to use some universal sign language, but it's kind of very basic. Like, for example, everybody knows woman, you know?
Oh, come on.
Everybody gets those, things like that. So, you get really generic, you get very gestural when you start doing universal sign language.
Okay, well, that's, that is fascinating.
Yeah.
That they don't do American Sign Language.
Very different. They're all developed based on the culture in which they live.
And that makes sense, thank you. That's interesting.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, back to Superintendent Coleman.
Okay, thank you. The only item I have for the superintendent report is just an update on the buildings and the approval of using our appropriated funds from two legislative sessions ago, and that is that we, they completed, the Office of Legislative, Office of Leg, the Legislative Auditors finished their, their work, and Board Leadership was there, and we went up to the Legislative Audit Committee where they reported on it. It was a fairly brief meeting, a motion was made, and the audit verified that we need the space. They also recommended that we have a, a kind of a statewide facility strategic plan. And so, anyway, Chair Moss has been in contact with them about next steps, and, and I guess what will happen next, we're developing that plan right now internally, and it'll go pretty quickly, because we have been working off a plan, it just hasn't been formalized in a document. And then, then we'll just go from there. Chair, do you have anything else to add to that?
Yeah, I'll just say, and we were planning to roll this out and announce it, but part of what came out of discussions leading into the audit was, and our own internal discussions, was the benefit that we would have if we had a committee that was a liaison between USBE and USDB. We always appreciate being able to be here monthly and hear the report and ask questions, but seemed like a good prudent thing and a great enrichment opportunity, frankly, to have a committee. So, we've put that together after meeting with the folks on the Hill, following up on next steps on the facilities plan. Vice Chair Earl, Member Wood, and Chair Norton of the Finance Committee have all agreed to serve on the committee that will be kind of a liaison committee to USDB. So, Member Wood is already serving as a non-voting member on their advisory council, and will continue to be that person. The other two members of the committee will help stay in touch with USDB with their needs and concerns and issues, and be able to relate those back to us. So, we're still kind of formulating the best way for them to do their work and let them kind of think about that a bit, but we look forward to that, and that will help us through this next step of going back on to the Hill with the EAC on the follow-up to the audit and release of those funds. So, that's new this week, and we look forward to... Sorry, got a hand? Member Davis?
Yeah, thanks, just so I understand. So, the recommendation is to move forward with all the buildings that we were looking at?
Well...
Or just the high school?
So, the, the feedback we got from the Hill is that in order to do that, they will need some development of the facilities plan, tying educational needs to those requests that were made earlier, and they're holding the money pending hearing that back from us. So, there's nothing new from this board in the way of what's been requested from the Hill. The committee's going to look at it and come back to us with the plan, and then see if we're in a position to go back up to the Hill and renew the same request and talk to EAC and PEA. They'll be analyzing the questions that came out of the audit, though.
So, who's doing the plan, and what's the timeline? Do we need to get that done sooner than later?
Yes, they're on it. I think Superintendent Coleman indicates he's already developing it, the committee will help put it together, and then if, if there's new action, that would come to the board. If it is an explanation of the prior action that's already pending, then it would be taken up there to the Hill. We had an EAC meeting for May 17th that we thought we might be able to present at, they did want a bit more information before that, so we're going to have to stay in touch quickly with EAC. But yes, the time is of the essence, they're already on it, and PEA meets in June, there might be an opportunity to present to PEA.
Awesome, thank you.
Anything more than that?
That's all we have today.
Okay, well, thank you much, as always. Thanks for both the information and the inspiration, always a good combo. Appreciate your, all your hard work and letting us learn from you, so, thank you, and we'll have a motion to adjourn. So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Any opposed? No, I don't hear anybody. Thank you all, and we'll take a few minutes and then come back in as the strategic planning study session. Yeah, let's just take five. Yeah?
Okay.
All right. We're back on during finance. Not much to it. Okay, welcome back. We are going to crank for 35 minutes and then go enjoy the weekend, so, we're a little informal here, I'm trying to see who we still have online. Do we still have anybody with us? Online, okay. So, I'll be quick, because I was given five minutes from Vice Chair Earl. We're going to talk about the mission and vision, we don't intend to take action today, but this is a really important part, this is kind of a cascade, you know? It flows from your mission and vision down to the other parts of the strategic plan, your goals and objectives, and then accountability measures. So, start with just a goofy game, I'm just going to see, and this is semi-serious, because opportunity to see how well these entities' mission and visions align with what they're all about. I guess I will lead in with that, and this is in the backup from last month, it's again here, this was put together by the board when they did the prior initial strategic plan, but you'll see on page nine of that backup deck that we passed out, definition of what's what. So, the vision, the definition is what we aspire to, why it matters is, we motivate and inspire change from here to there. The mission is what we do and how we do it. Why it matters is, it's our reason for being and how we serve. And then you've got goals and strategies and metrics. So, little pop quiz here, I'm just going to see if anybody can figure out whose mission and vision these are, and then we'll just sort of use that to... And I apologize, the text is not great here. Mission and vision statement is, build the best product, cause no unnecessary harm, use business to inspire, and implement solutions to the environmental crisis. Any guess which company, I, sorry, most of these are companies.
Ben &amp; Jerry's.
Whoa, Ben &amp; Jerry's could have been it, but Sarah beat you, and she got it right. That is Patagonia. You're a loyal customer, I assume? I got a lot of Patagonia in my closet. All right, so, think about that, aligns pretty well. Next one, mission statement, create groundbreaking sports innovations, make our products sustainably, build a creative and diverse global team, make a positive impact in communities where we live and work. That's the mission statement. Who's that? Christina? There you go. Vision, bring inspiration and innovation to every athlete in the world. So, you can see a little bit here how those are slightly different, you know, where you got the mission of, of what we do and how we do it, the vision is what we aspire to. And that is, in fact, Nike. Okay, next. Next one is to organize the world's information to make it universally accessible and useful. What's that?
Google.
Google?
They haven't seen Microsoft.
Nailed it, okay. Does that? You guys are like, name that.
They haven't seen Microsoft. No, they have not.
Exactly. All right, next one, mission, to create the most compelling car company of the 21st century by driving the world's transition to electric vehicles. The vision statement, to accelerate the world's transition to sustainable energy, and you are right again, Tesla, three to one to zero, I think, right? That is Tesla, yeah. So, interesting again, and just look at the vision versus the mission. All right, bless you. Okay.
I think it's the chair.
Okay, here, here's a brilliant clue that happens to just give away the whole thing.
Well, come on.
All right, one for Joe. Joe's on the board. To entertain, inform, and inspire people around the globe through the power of unparalleled storytelling, reflecting the iconic brands, creative minds, and innovative technologies that make ours the world's premium entertainment company. So, just think about how well that captures Disney or not. Next. To be a company that inspires, this one's a little trickier, to be a company that inspires and fulfills your curiosity. That's pretty broad. This is their vision, yes, this is what they aspire to. Sorry, I didn't find mission and vision for all of them, but... Inspires and fulfills your curiosity. Yeah. So, if it's, if it's confusing, they may have missed the mark, right? And, and this could be anybody, any, any guesses? I'll... What?
She googled it.
Oh!
She used the company that organizes information.
You used Google to find Sony. Yep, you, that's it.
They organize the information for her?
That's, that's Sony. All right, next one. I, I got one minute left. To refresh the world, to inspire moments of optimism and happiness, to create value and make a difference.
Oh, refresh.
Pretty...
What is it, Coke?
It is Coke. One for Molly, Coca-Cola. Inspire, that's true, you're a Georgia girl. All right, next. There's only one, or maybe, is that the end of it? We got one or two more. To inspire and nurture the human spirit. Pretty broad, then we get down to a little bit of detail. One person, one cup. Starbucks, yep, that is Starbucks. Uh, two more. To empower every person and every organization on the planet, and to achieve more. On the planet, to achieve more. Pretty, to empower every person and every organization on the planet to achieve more. Nope. You're Googling over there, that is Microsoft. You're crank, all right, last one. I like this one. we've all been talking about a little bit, which is that there is a finding that the public education, public education systems' mission and vision determined by USBE are not fully integrated with what's codified in statute. That's 53E2301. A mission and vision currently exist in statute and alignment is needed between USBE's strategic direction and that provided in statute. Recommendations of the audit, this is from OLAG, April 2021. Recommendations, where USBE follow mission and vision provided in Utah Code and if needed, request the Legislature consider adjusting the statutory mission and vision. And the Legislature consider the policy question of whether it's desirable to provide a mission and vision for the public education system in statute. So, you can see from the first recommendation there, they did sort of did a push and pull. They didn't say, well, you have to just completely adopt our language. They said, if needed, to request the Legislature consider adjusting the statutory mission and vision. So, we do have some direction there, but an opportunity to address what they described as a misalignment by coming back and saying, well, here's who we think we are and what we want to do, and here's how this fits in with what you're saying and have the opportunity to propose that they change maybe their mission and vision. So, it's a conversation, I think, is what they invited. So, let's see. And I'm trying to pull up if we have it anywhere.
Deputy Stones, can you put that back?
This is the PowerPoint slide deck from last month. It's in, yeah, it's in backup now.
I thought you moved on.
Yeah.
I thought you moved on.
All right, and I, so you'll also see in the OLAG audit, and I would encourage you to read through this, I think we want to do something more proactive in the next 30 minutes we have just to set the foundation here. But you'll see in the Utah, in the OLAG audit from April of 2021, page 17, that they do a side-by-side between the Utah Code and USBE's mission and vision. And you'll see that the Utah Code indicates that a mission is to assure Utah the best educated citizenry in the world and each individual the training to succeed in a global society by providing students with, A, learning and occupational skills, B, character development, C, literacy and numeracy, D, high-quality instruction, E, curriculum based on high standards and relevance, and F, effective assessment to inform high-quality instruction and accountability. And the Utah Code's vision, as they describe it, is to envision an educated citizenry that encompasses the following foundational principles. Citizen participation in civic and political affairs, economic prosperity for the state by graduating students who are college and career-ready, C, strong moral and social values, and D, loyalty and commitment to constitutional government. So, the first thing that jumps out is theirs is more complicated. It's a, you know, written as a code. There are principles in there. I think question is, to what extent do we feel that we should align with the principles elaborated in code and take it up there? But all of this needs to be part of the discussion, I think, over the next month. We did want to start the process today by reviewing that. This is where we are. This is what we decided our mission and vision were. This has been the input from the Legislature. How do we respond to that? And how do we, I think most importantly, think about where we've come, where we are, and whether we see any revisions that we want to make to our own mission and vision in response to that input from the Legislature? So, with that, I will give it the gavel to Vice Chair Earl to talk about some internal discussion. And then, we just felt like we could take, you know, the next month to stew it over and come back with some proposed action items in June.
Okay, so there, just a-
Can you tell me what we-
Yeah.
So, is it the part number?
And in the audit, page 17 lays out the, what I just described as the kind of side-by-side of code and our current mission and vision.
Well, if you go to the April, it'll have the mission and vision. So, go to the one that says April 2021. It's like the first link? No, it should be on your, it just says strategic plan, April 2021. You can get that there. Okay, so just a couple of things we're going to do and then we're going to get out before 3:30. Okay? So, just some things to keep in mind. We're going to actually separate into about three groups. Those of you that are online will, Board members, will have a breakout room you can go into. We're going to do 15 minutes. I don't know if timing is accurate. Yeah, we'll do 15 minutes. You can just, I, just as a group, start carrying on some more concrete dialogue, things to change, directions you want to go, maybe even begin some wording. And then, we need to decide some things ownership-wise on how we want to move forward, and we'll take suggestions for that. Do individuals just want to submit their recommendations and then we compile them and, and we just vote and make amendments, that kind of a thing? Or do we want to do something where we have a number of people or maybe even we have five individuals that look at all the different information and then make some recommendations and then we work from that? Another possibility is, is that you get three or more Board members to, to come up with, to work together towards some recommendation and then that, those individuals submit recommendations and once again, we kind of work off of those. Or if you have another suggestion. So, that's, like I said, we have the information in front of us, we have information from the Legislature. I personally have gathered quite a bit of feedback from my constituents over the last month, including my district, so I have considerable amount of feedback that I'm looking at myself. So, I'm just saying, we're going to break for about 15 minutes. We're going to give a little bit of feedback. If you want to share any of that feedback, it would be good to have one or two people, whoever wants to keep your, your record in your group that you're in, just keep a record of what you're doing and then we're going to share just one or two things out and then make some recommendations on how to move forward. And we'll try to do that real quick in the last little bit so we can get you guys out of here on time. So, we're going to do this half of the room and that half of the room. Or we could do boys and girls, or we could, if your birthday is January 2, no, I'm just kidding. We'll just do this half, that half, if that's okay, that kind of a thing. Those online, you can go to your breakout room. Hopefully you can get in one and then just same time. And I, we'll just go ahead and take, if anybody has some thoughts on, if, first of all, I'll share just a couple of thoughts we had. We probably need to have it, a meeting that's probably separate from the actual Board meeting so that we are refreshed, we can engage, and probably be a couple of hours type of a thing so we can have some thorough dialogue and some analysis or breaking down. Do you, do we want to, any other thoughts on how to, what you'd like to see that happen? How that happens?
We're done.
So, okay, we'll have that too. Our meeting will be done in 30 minutes, so. No thoughts? You want us to just decide? We can do that. Okay?
Well, I already shared my-
Yeah, you did. So, okay. And we'll list, if you want to report out, I don't know if you've already narrowed down to what your group had, is recommending or some thoughts that you had. If someone wants to just report a couple of things from your group and then we will, we will end for today. So, who's your spokesperson?
Sarah.
Sarah. Sarah. I have the amount of times that has happened, how many times have you had that happen, Sarah? Yeah, all the time. So, we wrote a mission, this was the mission, right? Mission. And it is, the Utah State Board of Education is dedicated to promoting a high-quality education for all students in Utah. We work to provide leadership, guidance, and support for all public education entities, and we advocate for resources and create policies that promote student achievement, equity, and innovation. All right, Molly, do you want to share out ours and then?
So, we were-
Cindy, oh, in just a second. Go ahead, Molly.
So, we were doing more of a brain dump kind of, we didn't actually come up, we didn't formulate sentences. We, we talked about more the ideas and then the interplay between a vision and a mission. We talked about a laser focus on educate, I put education, but I think it was academics. There were some, there was some feedback that, from some LEAs or constituent groups or constituents that said they liked what we had, which I thought was very interesting. Words like transparency, accountability, empowering, managing resources efficiently, managing resources and policy efficiently by gathering meaningful metrics related to a student's optimal success. That was a quote from somebody. Trust, accountability through transparency, ignite curiosity, personal responsibility is, is a, is a really important idea. Inspirational and aspirational from the student perspective, elevating the standards. And we also really think that it's probably, we would like the group to consider that small group work is probably more fruitful than large meetings in order to get this kind of work done. That was just a thought. I thought that was an appropriate word. And I hope that I reflected that somewhat accurately. If anybody would like to alter, change.
No, I think that's, those were good ideas. And who's, I don't know, Sybil collecting that information? Should we submit that to Sarah? Okay, if you want to, any of your feedback, if you want to go to Sarah, and then we've got one collector. Cindy, I don't know if you are, Board Member Davis, is there someone that wants to be your spokesperson? Are you the spokeswoman?
I, I guess I was assigned.
Okay, well, we can have someone else, but you look good on screen.
I'm happy to do it. So, Board Member Booth said that he thought our mission and vision were good, but they're too complicated, they need to be more clear, and they need to be easy to remember, and currently he thinks they're a little bit too obtuse. I'll be honest, I was thinking, there's no way we can even put drafts together of mission statements in 15 minutes. That first group that sent their mission statement out, wow, I am impressed. I had to eat my words. I feel like it's a little, a little too milquetoast. We came up with one, not mission statement, but vision statement, which we just thought, what do we really want for our kids? And then, the bottom line we decided is, Utah graduates are prepared to lead in their lives, families, and communities. And that's what we want for our graduates for Utah. And then, I love alliteration and assonance and all those things. So, I didn't say this to my group on the break when we were being transitioned. I just wrote, Utah education empowers students to excel. I just love all those Es, but of course, we're in the early brainstorming stages, so these are just ideas.
Okay.
Brent, Brent mentioned that when he has done this with city council and other things, they actually hired a consultant. I mean, we have some great consultants as Board members and staff members, but he threw that in too.
Okay, thank you. We will, so if you want to send those to Sarah, your feedback, Board Member Davis, if you don't mind, Sarah Young, not Sarah Rell, so. And if you have additional feedback you want to send in, that's, Sarah, are you our, are you our contact person? So, Sarah Young is our contact person, okay? And I have a little bit more to send in because I had, like I said, I had quite a bit of constituent feedback and also my local boards, I visited with all them for a considerable amount of time over the last month. So, but we will then, leadership will kind of set up some kind of a, a meeting for us to work together so, so that we can, probably, it'll probably be sometime in June so we can kind of get this finished up and move forward on the next thing. So, anyways, do we, I think that's all we've got today. And by the way, I always get 8675309, so, yeah, we're all there. Okay.
Thank you all.
Have a great weekend.
Yeah, thanks. I mean, those are some good juices stewing, so that's what we hope for. And we'll come back and try to bring this into action items, so think about what came out that you want to, you know, make a motion on. Thanks, everybody. Have a good one.